Welcome to the Mainland Planning Commission meeting. If you would please stand and join us in the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Neil Boatright.
Yes, everyone bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray to you today for your grace and forgiveness in our shortcomings. We ask that you give us knowledge and compassion to make good decisions for our community. And we thank you for all the blessings that you have provided Glen County and its citizens. Jesus, we pray to you because you are the great I am and you alone can make all things happen. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing that I would like to do is to review the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on request and to address any condition or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Okay, do we have any Planning Commission announcements? Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on March 7, 2023, subject to any necessary corrections. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor? It's unanimously passed. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, this is public hearing, and it's ZM 5345, 6735, New Jessup Highway parcel rezoned, and Ms. Leaf is here for the county.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 5345, and you last saw this particular site a couple months ago. They were interested in rezoning the forest agricultural area on the property to Mobile Home District, to do a mobile home park. There was feedback from neighbors and commissioners, and they did go back to the drawing board and decide to revise their application, and they are applying to rezone both the FA and the Mobile Home District portions of the property to medium residential, which is 16 units per acre and allows a variety of multifamily, single-family townhomes. So because of this revision, we did have to renotice it, so that is why it's before you this evening as a new public hearing. And just a few, so under the current zoning, the entire parcel, 79 acres, there's about 58 acres that's proposed for the rezone from FA and MH to MR. Density in the FA area is one dwelling unit per 20,000 square feet, so approximately two per acre. Under the Mobile Home zoning park, Mobile Home Park District, there's an eight mobile home per acre density, and an MR would be the 16 units per acre. You know, of the 58-acre site, it's, yeah, at this point, there isn't really a layout, so we don't know exactly how many units they may put on the property, and there are wetlands as well as a significant power line easement to the property. But just looking at just kind of the base numbers, you know, it could be 928 units, but we know it won't be that many, but that's just based off of 58 acres and a 16 units per acre. And this is the property. And so this is the FA, and this is the Mobile Home District in the purple, and then the highway commercial along through 41 will stay highway commercial. That's not, not part of this application. This is a survey of the property. And this is your sketch plan, showing where they would be doing the MR. And these are your possible actions. And Wesley Franks from Robert Civil is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Leaf? Mr. Franks?
Good evening, Commissioners. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. Like Ms. Leaf mentioned just now, we were here two months ago in February to propose a rezone to MH for the FA tract. We heard the concerns of the commission and the public and decided to defer the meeting, come back, relook at it, and now we're here tonight to propose the rezoning to MR. That'll be included of the FA and the MH currently zoned portions. The plan now for the development is to develop that into townhomes. We do have a rough concept plan that I've got that we could share if you'd like to kind of see where we're at. Right now, we're roughly about 234 units, so not anywhere close to the actual 16 units per acre. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but I'm here to request approval of the rezone as presented.
Want to have any questions, Mr. Franks?
Sewer capacity, has that been delved into yet?
We haven't sent any preliminary information requests at this time to joint water and sewer. I guess once we get past that, that'll be something we'll get into there, and if we have to, you know, upgrade any sort of sewer system, that'll be part of the project.
Your concept plan, do you have that digitally?
I do, yeah.
I wouldn't mind seeing it, and some of the audience might be, like to take a look at it as well.
And again, like Ms. Leaf said, this property's got, you know, multiple acres of wetlands across it and several ditches, so again, this is conceptual, so we've accounted for that at this point to a certain degree. Yeah, so actually, you can see the FA tract, the joint, I mean, the Georgia Power easement kind of separates those two areas of townhomes, I guess if you will. The back piece is the current MH zoning, and then the easterly portion, northeasterly portion, is the current FA zone.
Mr. Franks, previously, and y'all know I'm terrible with names, but there was a young lady here that lives right directly behind this property that was using an easement to get across, and it was my understanding that was the only access she had to that property.
That's correct.
Okay, is that being taken care of here?
That is, so if you see that road coming off 341 up there, kind of on the northwesterly side of the project, we're maintaining that, and actually, it's kind of a dirt road now, so that's going to be improved to an asphalt road up to the end of the current property that our developer's on, which then goes to those lots in the back, which is where they live. So if you look at the bottom left of the plan, there's those residential lots down there where she, where she lives, I believe.
Are these proposed to be two-story units?
They will, so you had a site plan that came before you, Southport Parkway Townhomes, it's probably been last year, maybe the first part of this year. That's that same developer, so it'd be similar product that they're doing down in Southport right here.
Let me make sure I understand, you're going to rezone the entire parcel, is that correct?
Not the entire parcel, so that front, I don't know if you can see where it's kind of hatched in gray on 341, that's currently highway commercial, that will stay highway commercial.
Correct, I understand, I'm sorry, I didn't, so there's not going to be any more mobile homes, is what we're saying?
No, there won't be, yeah, so we're taking the mobile home zoning that's currently on the property and rezoning that to MR.
Okay, then no mobile homes have been moved in there at this point in time?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. Other questions? Okay.
Thank you for sharing.
This is, this is a public hearing, and as part of a public hearing, need to see if there is anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition of this project. If so, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address the commission.
My name is Wayne Hutchison. I'm really not necessarily against it, I just, I guess I need some information, and I've tried all week to get that site plan to look at, and I couldn't get it because I was told it didn't exist. But what I'm concerned about is we're going to have probably 1,500 vehicles coming out of there every day. There's no permit from DOT at all on how that road's got to be on that curve, and all that should have been submitted along with this package, and nothing's been submitted on that. There is another road, which is a host road they could use to bus stop, sell in the traffic, but it's going to be impossible to come out of there and make a left-hand turn any morning or any evening, it's almost impossible, so there'll have to be a right-hand turn lane put in, and I'm sure there's going to have to be a D cell lane put in, but all that has to be approved from DOT. They may approve it, they may not, and I think we've kind of got the horse ahead of the cart here, because according to your ordinance that you go by, all of this should have been in, you go back to here, what he should have submitted is a general layout plan, and if no layout plan, this little proposal, this little site plan he's got is one that was put together pretty quick, I assume, but I don't know how you can approve something that you don't even know what you're approving. You don't know what kind of houses are going in there. He says townhouses. That could be anything from, you know, time shares right on down to multifamily subsidized housing and all that, and we don't know what's going to happen. Before you can make an honest decision and know what's going on, you first know, you've got to know what's going on that property. It don't make any sense to rezone it when we don't know what's going on there. That's a lot of units to be put in there, and try, and hopefully, hopefully, they say they're going to get a DOT to give, you know, to fix that lane, I mean, to design that system for them, the road right there, but you don't know what's going to happen or not. But if you think ahead, you can miss one quarter of a mile from McKenzie Drive with a traffic light to Fernwood. So the only thing that you should even consider is routing that traffic down McKenzie to the traffic light. Now, the county could participate in that, they got a lot of local optioned sales tax money that they hadn't spent in years and years and years, it's probably all molded up by now, but that's a good place to spend some of it, is putting that road in through, come across Keys Drive down by the edge of the power line, hit McKenzie, simple as ABC. You might have to acquire a little bit of property, you probably would have to take some of those old rotten trailers down that's been dilapidated and set in there for 20 years, you may have to take some of those out, I don't know, but that'd be a good time to clean that area up. But I'm concerned that this project, they more concerned about getting a rezone before they spend any more money on it, bottom line. But, you know, they got to put, they got to show us the infrastructure, and it's all outlined, I mean, you got it on your package right here, what has to be general layout plan requirements. All of that has to be submitted along with the application. And they go, there's a, there's a lot, marshland boundaries, right-of-way easements, setback, access dried buffers, off-street parking, lakes, loading areas, signage, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. One thing I do know that'll happen, if, once they get this project in, and if it's not done right to start with, when they sell this place to a management company, they don't have anything else to do with it, he's back in Atlanta. So the problems we got, we got to deal with them. But you rest assured, this project could be sold as soon as this is complete to some management company, and then they're going to be stuck with everything that's not right on it. So I'm asking this commission to do what's right, let them do their homework and get everything like they're supposed to have according to your ordinance, the Glen County ordinance, do what's right, get the site plan like it's supposed to be, and show us what kind of house is going on there. We know that we're not going to put no high dollar, $3,000 a month.
Sir, your time is up.
All right. Thank you so much, but please don't just vote to be voting, consider what's going to happen out here.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Carl Johnson, live at 6230 Old Jessup Road, Brunswick, Georgia, 31525. Been a resident of Glen County for 73 years and a half. I make, August, it'll be 74. But anyhow, I'm not necessarily against it, but I'm about the same thing Wayne said. It's not really telling us what they're doing, it's not telling y'all what they're doing, really, unless y'all got more than we got, you know, so I don't know. Couldn't get nothing, Wayne couldn't get it, but anyway, also, water and sewer is very important to me as a former fire chief, water is, needs to be there, they need to have hydrants in there and all that other type of stuff, and then have they got sewer, because we're trying to do away with septic tanks, because, you know, what kind of problem we have with septic tanks, and so that's the biggest thing, I'm not against it, but it needs to be done, I think, correctly and presented to everything they're planning on doing. And then, like you said, they got to get approval from DOT, you know, and I have to jump through every, when I was fire chief, I had to jump through every hoop in the world to build a fire station. I'm trying to save somebody's life, you know, and so I know, I know what it's like, but you need to do your due diligence, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Larry Daughtry, I live at 6670 New Jessup Highway, I'm a senior pastor at Sterling Church of God. First of all, I'm not in opposition, I have concerns about the traffic as well, I live right there on 341, just this afternoon, trying to make that left-hand turn to come here was, it was hard. But I do appreciate, one thing, the change from mobile homes to residential, but I'm like the rest of these individuals, is concerned for the traffic as well as those that's on the backside of that property, as long as they have an easement to their property. The young girl that stood up really moved my heart, her concerns, and also the safety of these families back there. Also, Commissioners, I want to say thank y'all for opening up with prayer, that just meant a lot. But that's, my concern is the traffic and as well as septic and sewer on that side. We're on a septic tank and a well on our side of the property, because it's on the other side of the street, but that's my viewpoint, and I would just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition? If so, please come forward and state your name. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in favor of this property? Would you please, this rezone, would you come to the podium and state your name? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Mr. Franks, would you like to come back and address the questions?
Sure. Wesley Franks, again, Robert Sil engineering. The information you've seen here tonight is typical of documentation that we've supplied the county for, you know, multiple rezones that we've gone through. So again, what you've seen here, typical of that process. And where we're at right now, obviously, is the zoning stage. When we move forward with this project, once hopefully the zoning gets approved here tonight, and obviously at the county commission level, then we'll move toward the next step, which would be most likely a site plan process. And at that stage, that when we would engage a traffic engineer to determine, you know, what improvements may be necessary on the state route, we'll have coordinated with GDOT to determine, you know, that traffic study would be supplied to them to make sure that's in line with what improvements that they want to see there as well. We would have vetted the water and sewer issues as well. There's a force main and a water main on that side of the road. We're within 500 feet of that, so we will be required to connect with that system. Most likely, we would have a gravity sewer system internally with a pump station that would manifold in that force main. So a lot of the detail that they've asked for will be highlighted as we go through the next steps of the process, which would be site plan, which we'll come back to y'all as well. And then, you know, construction plans, which would be through the county and permitting, like the normal process would be there, along with permitting with GDOT as well. So I'm glad to answer any questions that they may have prompted to y'all, so let me know if you have any.
You guys have any questions for Mr. Franks?
I do have one question. With the Fernwood Road, you mentioned that would be upgraded, like paved, asphalt. Does that stay a private access easement?
It would, yes.
And who would be responsible for that, the maintenance and upkeep, things like that?
I don't have the access language, agreement language, so I would assume it would be a combination of both, depending on what that language would say, so. Most of that lies in the, our developer's property, so I would imagine he would be responsible for the portion that's within his.
So it'd remain private, then?
Yes.
Got a question from Ms. Lee.
Ms. Lee, has applicant provided us all the material that's necessary to have a rezone tonight?
Yes, the application is complete.
Okay, it's not customary for us to get a site plan?
No, the conceptual plan that they presented tonight, that, this is the first time staff has seen it as well. They did not present that earlier, submit it earlier. So the only thing we require is a sketch plan, and it's a pretty vague representation of what they might be doing on the property.
Okay. The next question is, I know Mr. Franks is right, I'm just trying to reiterate what he said. The site plan portion, when they come back to get their site plan, that's when we'll address the traffic from the DOT. That's when we'll address water and sewer issues. That's when we'll address conceptual issues, correct?
Yes. So they did mention that they are most likely going to be doing townhomes, and the townhome development could go two ways. It could be a single-family subdivision where there's, you know, townhouse sublots that are fee simple, or it could be multifamily, you know, for rent, and it could be site. So if it's multifamily for rent, it'll go through the site plan approval process, but if it's the single-family subdivision, then that would go through the plating process. That's administrative, except for the final plat. The final plat would go to the board of commissioners.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ms. Lee or for Mr. Franks?
I have one for Mr. Franks. The number you quoted was 234 units, and I know the number that, based on the acreage, is much higher than that. To maybe have some additional community support and good feelings about the project, would, has the developer or owner indicated whether they would be willing to limit the number of units based on this rezoning?
They haven't indicated that to me. I think just from a overall developable upland, we're already limited anyway, so I think the limitation there would be sufficient in and of itself.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So just out of, I mean, just so we have a full picture, if they changed their mind and it wasn't going to be townhomes, and they decided to do a residential apartment complex, have y'all looked at that? I mean, how many max units that could be if you went with three-story apartment complex?
We haven't. Really, they've only told me that they're really wanting to do the townhomes, so similar to that product I mentioned earlier. And so we haven't, they haven't brought up to me that they want to go any other route than that.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate them taking the time and hearing what everybody said and coming back with a different plan than what they had originally.
Obviously be agreeable to make sure they address concerns, so yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Franks, is half of that property that's being rezoned, is it wetlands?
I don't know if it's half. I don't have the actual numbers with me, but it's a decent amount.
It's quite a bit.
Yeah, it's quite a bit.
Is it jurisdictional? Or is it going to be isolated? Or in your best opinion, how do you think it is?
I would think the wetlands, they've already submitted their JD to the Corps. They don't have, they haven't gotten it back yet. The wetlands most likely will be jurisdictional. There are several dishes that run through there, that they're trying to get a non-jurisdictional cost, that we can improve those. But yeah, that's in process right now, so.
So there's no way, the whole thing? I think Ms. Lee said there could be 900 and some odd units. There's no way, in reality, there can ever be 900 units on that property?
No, no way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions of Ms. Lee or Mr. Franks? All right, commissioners.
I make a motion to approve ZM 5345 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, from mobile home to this, big improvement for this area, and they will be limited greatly because of the wetlands, and that is a pretty large Georgia Power easement that runs through there, that's going to eat up a lot of development property for them as well. So I agree with the motion.
This is a best-case scenario, and I just, you know, I understand people that live there have emotions and have some opposite, well, not necessarily opposition, but questions. But I think this is the best development for that area at this time.
I agree, I agree with that, Madam Chair. I will say this to those residents that came out and have been out every time we've had, talked about this, and if this applicant does come back with a three-story apartment complex, you can bet that this commissioner will lobby the others for some great discussion about it. But I think that, based on what we're here to do tonight, which is vote on a rezone and not a site plan, that this is the best opportunity, so.
And I would like to address your concerns with traffic. I think we, every time there's a new development, we're all concerned with traffic. You know, all we got to do right now is go up and down 17, and, you know, where they're doing all that work and there's a lot of traffic, but, you know, that will be part of the plan. They will have to present a traffic plan when they come in with their development, so, and DOT. So we'll, you know, I understand what you're saying, but that's something else that will be taken into consideration. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Next on our agenda is ZM 5397-25 East Gate Drive Plan Development. And that also is Ms. Lee for the county.
It is, yep. I'm on the show this evening, so you'll see a lot of me.
So I'll have the name right every time.
That's right, exactly. This is ZM 5397-25 East Gate, and they are proposing to allow surface mining as an allowed use, and the reason for this is they are planning to have a borrow pit. The dirt's primarily going to be used on the Highway 17 widening project that was just mentioned. And in order to take dirt off the site, they do need to get a surface mining permit through the state EPD, and so this does, go back to the use having to be allowed in the PD text. This is an industrial property, and the comp plan has it as industrial as well, so. And this is a property off of East Gate, so East Gate comes off of Highway 17. Harry Digger's is just to north of here. We did receive some questions from an adjacent landowner that lives along 17, adjacent to the property, and I know the individual did talk with the applicant, Mr. Owens, about the concerns, and so they had a discussion about that. So here's a survey of the property, and these are your possible actions, and Cameron Owens is here as the applicant. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Owens, would you like to come forward?
My name's Cameron Owens, and I'm the applicant, and currently the Golden Isles Development Authority owns the property, so I guess I'm agent with their support. Ms. Lee explained exactly what we're trying to do. Ms. Gibbs, you talked about traffic. One, well, let me back up. I did go and speak with Mr. Malcolm Harris. He's the adjacent landowner right there, and he's a little sensitive right now, because the reason is, he owns everything to the east of this track, and the DOT just took a lot of it in front of his house, which is at the northeast corner. They took right in front of his house, so the road's coming a lot closer to it. So when I pulled up, he associated me with the DOT, and I had to let him know I wasn't with the DOT. But we did have a good conversation, and he was just curious and wanted to know, I think he used to hunt that whole area over there. He and I've worked out an agreement. I'm going to purchase an easement from him, in fact, across the very southeast corner of what he has left, which will save on some of the traffic. You talked about before, traffic in the Highway 17 area, due to the fact that Mr. Harris was willing to work with me on an easement. The road widening right there is on the west side of the road, and we'll be able to run off-road trucks and really never enter the highway for a portion of it. I mean, not all of it, but at least it'll cut back on a little bit of the traffic, so. And the intent is to dig approximately 10-acre borrow pit there, so. If y'all've got any other questions, I'll be glad to do my best.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Owens?
I have a question, and it says dredging landfill or the extraction of natural materials. The landfill portion is the only thing I'm concerned about, and I would ask that either it's removed or you add for organic material only for landfill.
I'm fine with eliminating everything but natural materials, but I think that was the language that the county encompasses all the borrow pit or surface mining activities. So we definitely don't intend to do a landfill, and we'd be glad to stipulate that. We don't intend to harvest anything but dirt.
Right.
So, and the end result, obviously, Ms. Lee mentioned that this is really step one. The EPD is going to make us do a, it'll be a mining land use plan, which will handle not only the construction portion, but the remediation or reclamation. And so the end result will be essentially an extra retention pond in the area.
Right, well, the landfill portion was the only thing I was concerned with.
As far as I'm concerned, I'd just sooner move. When I saw it, I thought it might generate some, you know, animosity with it.
Comments?
Comments. We have no intentions of doing that at all, so I'm happy to, for that to be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Owens, how large is that parcel of land?
It's 24.1 acres, according to the SHOOP survey.
And you only want to dig a 10-acre lake?
That's, we've got to get a delineation done. There's kind of some preliminary stuff that's done, but currently, the Development Authority fortunately had kind of a preliminary wetland delineation. So what I'm requesting is currently what's already kind of slated as upland. It looks pretty uniform out there, but 10 acres is sufficient for what we're trying to do.
I'm just assuming that you're going to dig that borrow pit for dirt for Highway 17?
Yes.
So, okay. So pretty much what you dig when they use it for 17, that's pretty much going to wind you up?
That would be, there's two or three more projects in that area that are coming up as well. You know, this project stops, and then another one starts in the future, you know, a couple of years down the road probably with DOT timeline. We would like to be able to use it for, you know, as many of those projects that are close by as possible.
And you said Mr. Harris is okay? Everything's okay with Mr. Harris?
Yes. He's, he and I, he's waiting on me to have Lee Carmichael draft an easement that actually, it'll be a 60-foot easement that crosses the southeastern corner of his property. He actually asked me if I wanted to dig his property too while I was there, so that's a pretty good endorsement.
So if I understand correctly, then because there will be another project and perhaps another project, you will continue to dig in that site as those projects come up?
We hope to. You know, we, the permitting process with the EPD is, you know, expensive. We'll have to get, like I was mentioning, the mountain land use plan, and then it's $1,500 in addition to what I'm paying for the property. For every acre we consume, we have to pay to the, or we have to prepay the EPD $1,500 per acre as a remediation guarantee, or I guess it's a, there's a chance that you could get it back.
It's basically a bond?
It's a bond, right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Cameron? Okay, this, too, is a public hearing, and so if there is anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition of this, would you please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission? Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Lee?
Okay, commissioners.
I do, I just have one quick question. Sorry, I just thought of it. So will Mr. Owens take ownership of it from the EDA and begin to pay property taxes on it, or is it going to remain in the EDA's name?
My understanding is remaining in EDAs, but Mr. Owens can explain if there's a different relationship there.
Please come up.
Okay.
No, it would be a fee simple purchase.
Okay, perfect. Not that that really matters for this, but that's a good thing. We like that.
So you'll be paying taxes?
I will be paying taxes.
So it's going from no tax roll to tax roll.
Yeah, the EDA does not pay taxes.
Commissioners, any other questions of Ms. Lee or Mr.?
I've got one other quick question. The trees that are on that site, are they?
Yeah, the EDA does not pay taxes.
Commissioners, any other questions of Ms. Leaf or Mr.?
I've got one other quick question. The trees that are on that site, are those planted pines? It looks like they're in rows. Are they harvestable, or what's the plan for that?
Well, they are. It looks like it was a residential cut, so the density's not like a normal pine plantation. But it is, it's a former pine plantation.
So will, I mean, will they be harvested? And how much of that, or just where you need it, or what's the?
I would assume where we're going to dig, for sure, would be the first step. But eventually, maybe all of it. It really kind of, the wetland delineation has not been officially determined by the Corps. So that probably will have some impact. We wouldn't be able to clear what is jurisdictional, so.
Commissioners, any other questions? All right. Commissioners, can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept as presented ZM 5397.
Now second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any other questions?
Are we going to remove landfill out of that, BD? Can we remove landfill?
You can. That can be part of your amended motion to remove the word landfill from...
You want me to rescind that motion?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to rescind ZM 5397 acceptance motion, and I'd like to present it again as an acceptance, but I'd like to withdraw the landfill portion of that.
Now second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, and, well, first, we need to vote on rescinding it. Am I right? Is that correct?
You can amend the pending motion to exclude landfill. So that would be the better motion to make in that situation.
So is that what we've just done?
Was that seconded? Was that?
Yes, sir, that was seconded.
Your second motion was seconded?
Do I need to rescind that motion?
Yes, I think you should rescind that motion. In fact, I think if we can, if we can just have a vote to...
To rescind?
To rescind all that and then just start over, I think that's the best thing.
Okay, all right. All in favor of rescinding? Okay, that's unanimous.
And now we can, the commission can state the motion as intended.
You got me scared to say it?
No, I think you're good. I wasn't exactly sure how that would read out on the amended motion.
Yes, I understand. I understand. That was kind of muddy. All right. I'd like to, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept ZM 5397 with the language landfill taken out.
Now second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is ZM 5398, 130 Capital Square Drive. And Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. So this is ZM 5398, and similar to the last application, this is another application for, to allow the dredging landfill and extraction of natural materials, so they can get the surface mining permit from EPD. The goal here would be to expand an existing pond. So they are amending their PD text to include this language. So the property is located, is at exit 38. Perry Lane is to the north top of the screen. And there are two different apartment complexes that are planned, or might be one. I think there's apartment complex developments that are planned for this, for this area. And the existing pond is over in this location. They would be expanding it to accommodate the new development coming in. So this better indicates, this is a proposed multifamily project here. This is existing pond, and as you can see here is the expansion that they're planning. And these are your possible motions. And I will note, this is the last application, the word landfill is also in this, if that was of interest to remove. And Mr. Owens is here for this application as well.
You have any questions of Ms. Leaf?
Just out of curiosity, because we haven't had a lot of this since I've been on the, are there limitations of hours of operation to do digging and dredging, or whatever the right terminology is?
Not specific to digging and dredging, but the noise, the county's noise ordinance, I mean, does have in terms of when there can be working hours and decibel levels of noise. There was another surface mining application on the island that the board did place hours of operation, days and hours, restricting that particular project. So, I mean, this is adjacent to existing residential neighborhood. If that's something that the commission wanted to talk more about, or if Mr. Owens had a specific proposal for, you know, what he would be doing out on the site. And this one would be a more limited term versus the other project was longer term in scale. This one is really just to expand this pond for this development project.
Ms. Leaf, can I ask you to go back to, I think it's your second slide, just for a quick second?
Is it this one?
To the language?
Oh.
Yes.
Right here. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Leaf, this, this surface mining is specifically for the enlargement of the retention pond, just so the development that we voted for six months ago or eight months ago can move forward? Is that correct?
That's correct. It is for that development project.
This has to be done.
That, yes, it is. In terms of the, whatever, negotiations between the development community, it's not a county requirement, to my understanding, or my knowledge, but it is for the development to move forward.
For the apartment development to move forward, this has to be done?
That is my understanding for what they need to have to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of Ms. Leaf? Mr. Owens, would you like to come forward?
Cameron Owens again. I'm the applicant. So, related to your question about Mr. Burright, the intent here was, when we originally dug the pond, we thought it was going to be sufficient. And part of our agreement with the second apartment complex was, we marketed it to them as having sufficient retention. So part of our agreement with them was, if it were necessary, we would expand the pond. But due to the EPD rules, we can't move that dirt off-site and sell it without having the proper zoning with the county. So we have to have that box checked with the EPD, or it has to stay on-site. And we don't really, I don't know if there's going to be much necessary for, the first apartment complex is past the dirt needing stage. They're almost, they're doing all of their structures now. So we need to be able to move it off the site. And we're actually consuming, we would rather not do this, but we're consuming valuable property, already zoned property, to create more pond. So we would like to mitigate some of the loss by selling the dirt, if possible, because it is a pretty, you know, high-traffic area as far as, you know, other developments may need the dirt. But currently, they don't need any more dirt on that site. We don't have, if we had to stack it up, we've only got an acre left. It would be, you know, really, I don't even know that it would even be possible. So we ask that you guys allow us to make that slight modification to the zoning so that we can remove it from the site and expand the pond. And we're happy to drop the landfill part of that.
All right, Mr. Owens, as you well know, this is going to be a little more sensitive than what we did previously. And would you tell us about your hours of operation, what your intentions are?
I'm familiar with the one that was on St. Simon's. I don't remember exactly what was agreed upon, but, you know, reasonable business hours, you know, I think would be...
So eight to five?
I mean, I think that would be fine. I mean...
Possibly a Saturday here and there?
I mean, that would be preferable, but if we were not allowed to do that, I don't think it would be a big deal. You know, we, we don't have any current, we don't necessarily have a current place for that dirt to go. So I don't think the velocity of that being, I mean, we have to get it done as quickly as possible, but I don't think that we're going to be under a Saturday, Sunday time crunch trying to get it done.
How much area do you have to dig out, Mr. Owens?
I believe it was, I think it's currently 6.7, the existing acreage. And I want to say that we've got to expand it three and a half more.
Three and a half more acres?
Yes.
So it'll be almost 10 acres?
That's right.
So, you talking about, you talking about 7,000, possibly around 7,000 loads of dirt? All right. The only other concern that I personally have is the folks that live, I don't even know what subdivision that is, but there's...
Sandalwood.
What, what kind of dust control measures are you going to use to keep the dust down?
I'm a 50% owner. My partner in this, you know, is Keith. He has a water truck. When we were doing the other work out there, when it got dusty, he was generous enough to bring it. We've got plenty of water, so that's not an issue. And there is, now there's joint water and sewer fire hydrants out there, too, so we could get a meter and fill up anytime we need to if it got dusty.
Key word I was looking for is a water truck.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, you got a water truck available. I explained to some of my fellow commissioners today, when it gets dry, you can talk about water trucks. You can talk about anything you want to. It just, it's not going to control the dust. When the wind's blowing 20 or 30 miles an hour, and you have land that's basically been stripped down, you're going to have dust.
Right.
If it's dry. Okay. So all we can ask of you, same thing the county asks of me, to do the best we can. You know, we're not God, and we can't make it rain. And it's a difficult situation. And like I said, and I know, you know, this is a little more sensitive area, and if you would, please just take a little more precaution and...
We will.
Yes, sir.
This will mitigate the dust a good bit because instead of all the, you may have seen all the traffic with the off-road trucks around and around when we were digging the original pond, this dirt will literally leave the site almost immediately and hit a construction entrance to a paved road. And then at that point, it shouldn't be, you know, much of an issue, because the dirt that we'll be excavating will be wet. So, I mean, are, you know, relatively wet compared to the site.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. And if there is anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition to this, please come forward and state your name and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed zoning decision with a modification of removing the word landfill. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? You have a question?
Let me, oh, I'm sorry. I was on, I'm in a...
Okay, all in favor? It is approved. Thank you. Okay, our next, our next project is CUP 5411, 4320, New Jessup Highway Conditional Use Permit. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. This is a conditional use permit, CUP 5411, for a car wash in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. So a car wash is considered a conditional use. And following this application, there's also a site plan application for the car wash. You may be familiar with this property. It is just south of the proposed Wawa, a convenience store and gas station that was recently approved. The proposed building footprint is 5,000 square feet, so they are proposing one automated tunnel car wash and one three-bay pay station. There'll be 20 freestanding vacuum stations, and the business hours are proposed to be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So this is the property here. This is Community Road, 341, and the Wawa is in this location. And this is the proposal. And they are having, they do have a shared access off of 341 with the Wawa, so that's part, that was shared on the Wawa plans as well. And these are your possible motions. We did receive one question from a resident that lives across 341 from this proposed project, and staff did a talk with them about the project, and they looked at the plans. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Chris Amos is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Leaf?
I do. I don't really know my, I'm going to try to word it. So, so there's been a number of these type car washes built, might be noisier than a normal gas station location. Has that been an issue, as far as you know, with any of the other, the noise that it generates? Having complaints from nearby residents? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I mean, not, yeah, there was another location that, probably the last few months, we see, they had upgraded some vacuums, and they are, you know, more powerful than the ones they had before. And so we had received some, some concerns about the noise from those vacuums. So that is something that we do occasionally here. So I'm not sure if there's any kind of, there would be, you know, landscape buffer along 341, but I'm not sure if there's any other buffers that are in place to help mitigate that.
And was that the question, that property, what was the question, the property owner that had it?
For the other.
Mm-hmm. No, I mean, for the one you said y'all answered their questions, across 341.
Oh, across, yeah, across 341. A lot of it was light-related, and I believed, and Mamreys Presley was a planner on this, and I think you may have talked to Chris, and Chris can talk about this. I know a lot of it was, was lights glaring onto his property. And so I know they were, you know, going to look at some cutoff fixtures to make sure the light wasn't. Also, regarding music, if there was going to be music played throughout the facility, you know, throughout the day and evening, because some gas stations, you know, have music that plays at the pumps. And then, I don't know if the noise from the vacuums, I think it was more just kind of just noise generally coming from this location and the hours of operations as well. But 7:00 p.m. is the latest of the operating.
And that site location across the road would have some residential, and then isn't there some mobile homes, like behind?
I think they're all gone.
Are they all gone? Okay, between it and the railroad?
Behind there.
Okay, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Leaf? Mr. Amos, would you like to come to the podium?
This is Chris Amos with CSCC Incorporated. I think Stephanie covered pretty much everything. I did speak with the, there is one residence out there, so across the street. Mr. Donnie Hutchinson and I have spoken twice since the application was made. So he was concerned about noise, but it was primarily music and that kind of stuff. I think there's a little bit of an issue with the music playing on the gas pumps at the Friendly Express. This caused him some concern. That's not, there's not going to be any music being played by the business. So the only noise would be from the vacuum cleaners. He was concerned about lighting, and I told him that we can certainly, whatever lighting is on, the hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., so it's not going to be a late-night thing. But the lighting, security lighting, or whatever that is on the building or in the parking areas can be designed so that it's shielded and won't cast light across to where his house is. He was also concerned about security fencing because of a problem, I guess, which is occurring out there with homeless population. He was a little concerned about people in camping out there at night. I'm not quite sure how we can solve this, given the access, they can't really put gates up on the driveways. So certainly, we will look at that when we get into the actual engineering design of the building, and we also... And we also discussed drainage and what was coming into that big ditch in the culvert that goes under 341. So, I think that pretty much covers it. I can answer any questions anybody may have about this. And I guess we can talk about the site plan when it comes up here in a minute or two.
Any questions for Mr. Amos? Okay, this is a public, a public comment? Or actually, a public hearing? If you would, if there's anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission.
Good evening. My name's Donnie Hutchinson. You've heard my name already. So I have talked with Chris on a couple of different occasions, and he's expressed the concerns already. But I wanted to introduce myself so that you know we do have concerns. I am concerned about the noise. I'm concerned about the homeless that we have up and down that thing that are staying in the house across the street from me right now, which is right next to the car wash. There's also some folks that have started a dump right beside that that the county can't or won't do anything about. So I'm concerned about anything that happens there. I'm not a music person, so I don't like to hear music 24 hours a day. I don't want the bright light shining in my bedroom window. So Chris has assured me that they can do something with the lighting. They're not going to play music. But we haven't come to a conclusion on what we're going to do about the ditch yet. Because there's a big ditch that runs right beside my property. It's not on my property. It belongs to the property right next to it, but it's a huge ditch. That's where the detention pond will flow water into. We had an issue with that ditch several months ago with the water department, where they had a leak and sewer went down the ditch. Without asking, they come onto my property and completely destroyed my yard. The county or the water department will not come back on my property to maintain that ditch. So if they have a problem, I don't know what they're going to do with the water. I don't want it down that ditch. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this? Please come to the podium and state your name and address the commission. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public period, the public speaking period is closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve CUP 5411 as presented. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, Commissioners? All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, next up is Public Comment, SP 5412, 4320, New Jessup Highway Site Plan Approval. And Ms. Lee is here again.
Thank you. This is the site plan for the proposed car wash on 341. So basically, I went through with the last application. Yeah, as we discussed, so GDOT has issued a letter of intent for the proposed driveway. So it hasn't officially been approved, but they have issued a letter of intent. And that's that shared driveway that Wawa and this car wash would share. And these are the building elevations proposed. And then this is the site plan. And these are your possible motions. And of course, since there is a companion CUP, the site plan would only be valid if the conditional use permit was approved, is approved by the Board of Commissioners. And Mr. Amos is here representing this project as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask what? The ditch that was just referenced, where is that? Next to Mr. Hutch's property?
Yeah, that's it right there.
This one? Okay, so on the south side of it?
And I can discuss that whenever I get up here.
Yeah, Mr. Amos can answer some questions about that, discuss it further.
Okay.
So his house is to the right of that ditch? Across the street, okay.
Yeah, his home is, yeah, across 341, I think, this location. Is that right?
Yeah, I see that, okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Amos, would you like to come forward and speak to us?
Chris Amos again. So the Wawa project, all of their storm drainage is coming down the 341 right away in a pipe system, and it's discharging into the same ditch. That ditch is draining, the railroad ditch that's behind the property is draining a fairly large area. And then it's going through a six-by-six box culvert that's under 341, into that ditch that runs by Mr. Hutchinson's house, and then into the canal behind that. So that's where the drainage, that's what the drainage pattern is. There's nowhere else to take the stormwater except into that ditch. Because there's no, there are no other drainage facilities around anywhere. So, and we haven't designed the drainage system yet. This is site plan approval time. Certainly, we will be doing storm drainage design pretty early in the design process when we get started. And I have spoken to Mr. Hutchinson about coming out to his house and looking at the condition of the ditch when we get into the engineering design. And I intend to do that, so that we can, I can see what his concerns are.
The post runoff is supposed to match the pre-development runoff, is that right? Or I noticed there's a detention, stormwater detention in the back.
There is, and I don't know if that's large enough. That's why I haven't designed the drainage system yet. There are other options, obviously, the Wawa. All of their storm drainage is under the parking lot, every bit of it. So we'll get into that when we get into the technical, the site engineering phase of the project. I think I've actually got another detention pond shown behind the building as well, between the building and the ditch. The intent there was to pick up all of this roof drainage and put it into that pond before it goes into the ditch. But I'm still waiting on a little bit of topography on that site before I can finish the design work.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
It doesn't even pertain to what we're talking to, but you said something that intrigued me, got my interest up. Did you just say that all the retention water is underneath, is going to be stored underneath the Wawa parking lot?
That is correct.
I'm assuming that it's in concrete basins?
It's a, it looks like storm tech, and I think it's cul tech. It's a chamber system that goes under the parking lot. They're all connected together with a gravel bed. And then the overflow from that then goes into the ditch. It's very expensive.
Yeah, have you ever seen one of those?
I've designed them before. They're very expensive.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. That's what, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Amos? Okay, we are in a, you got another question?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we're in a public comment period. If there is anyone who would like to come and speak in opposition to this project, please come forward and state your name and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this project? Please come forward and state your name and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners? Well, Ms. Lee first, excuse me.
I don't have anything further, if you have any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
All right, Ms. Lee, we've talked about the light diffusers to keep the light off of Mr. Hutchinson. Okay, I was really hoping Mr. Hutchinson would come up and refresh my memory.
Sound?
Sound.
Sound and music.
Okay, and we can, we can put in our proposal that there's no overhead music playing 24 hours a day from the car wash. The operation of the car wash is from 7:00 to 7:00. Is that correct? Okay. This ditch that we're talking about, if it has a six-by-six concrete structure underneath Highway 341, somebody anticipated a lot of water running through there at some point. My question is, that ditch that runs down by Mr. Hutchinson's property, where does it, does it go through that trailer park that's behind there, onto the marsh? Where does it go, Mr. Hutchinson?
It goes right down that property line, like where Preacher Mill has that big field cleared.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's the backside of the property. And where Alan and Graham sits on that cut-through road, the byproducts of that ditch, goes straight back down there and hits the old hall and now.
So it goes back by old Potteet Seafood is where you?
It's on the other side. Potteet Seafood is on the other side of the corner.
Okay, okay, sir.
On that cut-through road, the byproducts of that ditch, that cut-through road, by the way, I'm going to go to the store.
You live in the Allen's residence? You live in Mr. Adie Allen's?
Commissioners?
That's all, that's all the questions I have.
So are you wanting those to be conditions of the site plan approval?
Well, we've already said that Chris had already told us that he talked to Mr. Hutchinson and the light diffusers was, you know, they're supposed to take every effort to diffuse the light off of him. And it was on my understanding that it had already been agreed upon the parties that we could keep the sound, the music off of him. Isn't that correct, Mr. Amos?
Yes.
So really, the only other issue is the ditch. And I don't know of any way to remedy, I mean, I just don't know. Thank you so much. I need all the help I can get. So I don't really know how to remedy the ditch. So, I mean, I don't even know how to address that. So we've-
Okay, this is mine. I guess my question is, those things, I know that the current owner and his representative are saying those things aren't going to happen, you know, there's not going to be big bright lights shining on his property. There's not going to be music. But somebody else could own that car wash six months from now. I'm asking the question is, do you want those in the motion to approve the site plan? That those conditions have to be met? And can we even really do that?
I think the music, you could, because the only recourse would be if someone is, you know, there's a new buyer, new operator, and they're playing music all day. As long as it is in compliance with our noise ordinance, you know, there's not much we'd be able to do. So if that's really something you would like to put into play, and I'll defer the attorneys if there's any issues with that. And so with the lighting, we do have the lighting ordinance. So I think the only thing would be, I mean, if there are any violations of that, you know, it could come to us as a complaint. But if there is a specific, like, lighting fixture or something like that that you'd want to make sure is done, I don't know if we would have enough information right now to do that.
I guess my question is, should those really have been part of the conditional use permit, not the site plan?
I think for like noise, that would have been a CUP issue. And I think y'all can still make that recommendation and go up to the Board of Commissioners even now. You know, things that you want to see on the ground are site plan issues. You know, in terms of, you know, put light in here, don't put light in here, are site plan issues. But noise would be a, you know, all noise should stop at X. Or all noise should be, you know, it would be a conditional use permit issue.
Well, I have a question. When we're talking about noise and we're talking about light, and it's going to not, it's not going to be operational after 7:00, but is it going to be pitch black? Is there going to be some kind of lighting there?
Yeah, and they're saying they'll cap it on one side where it doesn't shine across the street, right? Is what we're talking about, that the light fixture would be solid on one side so it doesn't shine across the street, yeah.
Yeah.
Directional light?
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying if those are, we might should have addressed, I don't know if we can put them in the site plan and argue worry about future owners or, in terms of those issues. Because if it's not in the conditional use permit, then they could sell this tomorrow and they could play music. They could have lights that meet the lighting ordinance, you know, they could have those things. So it's time to back up if you, I mean, I don't even know if we can back up, but.
And I do have a question that just came to mind as well, and this may be a question directed for Mr. Amos. Now, I do understand that the hours of operation are from 7:00 to 7:00. And I don't know, we're talking about the noise and the lighting and all that. But what about some of the patrons who, will there be any part of this proposed car wash where people can use after hours? Because I noticed that some patrons at car washes, they play the music, not the car wash. And it's a little loud for the neighborhood. So I was just wondering whether anything could be, you know, said about that.
No, after hours, there will be no portion of this that'll be open to the public. So there's, people won't be able to come in at 11 o'clock at night and vacuum their car out or something like that. One is closed, it's closed.
Okay, I'm going to ask another question, and that is, and this, I guess, would be more from Stephanie. Because we're talking about this whole new concept that's going to be built along 341. Is this any different for Wawa? Because I don't recall any of this coming up before.
Right, yeah, with Wawa, because Wawa is also a conditional use permit for an automobile service station. So they have a CUP and a site plan. My recollection is, I do not remember that we had any public comment during the Wawa hearings. And maybe it's because of the distance a little bit further north, I'm not sure. But, yeah, I mean, they, I do not remember offhand what their hours are. I'd have to check. But I know they would be later than the 7:00 p.m. and earlier than a 7:00 a.m. But we didn't have any other restrictions placed on, on the Wawa.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was thinking. I remember that we did not, we didn't delve into it at that point in time. Commissioners, any other questions? Any other recommendations? Mr. Monford? Do we need to step back one?
In terms of you want to set hours, or you want to say that it must close by a certain time or noise stops at a certain time? Is that where the commission would like to go?
I don't, I just don't want us to make a mistake. If, for example, this place sold as soon as it was built and it wasn't in what we approved to begin with, then there would be a problem.
So Commissioners, I do think the hours of operation, the noise, things like that are a conditional use permit issue and not necessarily a site plan issue. So what I think you can do, because I think all you're doing right now is making recommendations to the board on the CUP, is to make another motion asking that the recommendation include, you know, closure by 7:00 or noise no later than 7:00. I think you can still do that at your level and that get pushed through to the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, the one that we're considering now is, or the one we just did?
The one you just did. So I think if you want to dispose of the site plan as you see appropriate, and then-
We can go back to that one?
Go back to that one, yeah.
Is that all right with you guys?
And I don't think y'all need to necessarily rescind your prior motion. I just think you need to have another one that adds a condition to your recommendation on the conditional use permit.
That you want it? I guess, I'm just asking Mr. Boe, right, if those are things that he thinks need to be binding on anybody that owns the car wash in the future?
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty confident that other things that we've- I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty confident, that other things that we've passed since I've been on this board, we've asked for directional lighting.
That would be a site, yeah, that would be a site, yeah, no, just, I think the noise and the operation hours.
Right, lighting could be site planned.
Yeah, but the music playing and, are those, I mean, I think we have all, I think that Mr. Amos is going to make sure it's done with what he just said would be done, but it could be, the operational piece could be somebody else down the road.
Well, some, I understand that, but somewhere in this conditional use permit, I'm pretty confident that it says the hours of operation would be 7 to 7. I've read that somewhere, and I thought it was in conditional use permit.
It was, let's see, I think we did have, let me see if we have that in a slide. We did, actually, so for the conditional use permit, yes, we did have it there about 7 to 7.
That doesn't need to be addressed.
That's right, that is part of their conditional use permit of those hours of operation.
So that'll be part of it.
Right, yes, so the hours are already covered, I mean, that's part of their conditional use permit application, but the noise, lighting, and then was there something related to the drainage that was a concern too?
I don't know how you address that.
Okay, that would be, so when they, when they apply for their construction plans for the site, I think that would address your concerns at that point, because those would be civil drawings that would be valuable. I don't know if that would address your concerns.
So Stephanie, Ms. Leaf, did the motion as presented include those conditions? So when the planning commission approved that or made that recommendation on the CUP, did that include those conditions? Or as presented, did that not include the conditions?
It wasn't specifically added, but because this is what was included in their application packet, I would encompass that in as presented, because this was a packet that was submitted to us, presented to the commission, included those hours, so...
So Mr. Mumford, you're satisfied with that answer?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, y'all catch me up where we are. We are now, we are now considering a vote on the site plan approval, is that correct?
Yes.
And do we have a motion?
I don't think we had a motion.
No, there's no motion made yet.
Can I have a motion?
I mean, suggestion for the lighting, I mean, you could add a condition that, you know, prior to issuance of the, I would say, the commercial building permit, a detailed lighting plan would need to be presented to staff that we can review, you know, with the engineer to ensure that the cutoff fixtures are, as has been described during this meeting, so, so I think the language would be prior to conditional, prior to issuance of a commercial building permit, a detailed lighting plan is presented for approval by staff.
You ready for me?
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Do we have to put anything about it that is contingent on the final approval of DOT of the driveway? Or is that, that's kind of, they won't be getting a building permit without that?
Correct, yeah, they will not get a building permit without that.
All right, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to present, to present and accept, approve SP 5370 with...
No, no, we're doing 5412.
I'm very confused now, can y'all tell? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 5412 with the condition of a lighting, a detailed lighting plan.
And Commissioners, and it's also contingent upon the CUP also being approved, right?
Correct.
At the board level, so the site plan will not be fully approved until the board takes up the CUP and approves it.
Second.
Did you get all that, Nisi? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Mumford, do we need to go back to the other one?
No, Madam Chair, we don't. I think we make sure, though, when it goes through the board, that those conditions as presented are listed as part of that motion as presented, so we're good, y'all are good.
Thank you. Where am I? Okay, we are now at SP 5370, Homewood Element Site Plan Approval. Ms. Leaf? Thank you.
Hi, this is a new hotel, the Homewood Element, so this is at the exit 38 area off of Glenco, off of Summit Drive. And it's a proposed 234-room, two-building hotel development. So there's really basically dual branded. Homewood is a four-story building with 123 rooms, Element is a four-story building with 131 rooms. Both structures are 58 feet, 5 inches tall. And this is the proposed site right here. And this is the proposed elevations. And this is the site plan, so Element and Homewood. And just to kind of orient, this is Highway 95, Interstate 95 over in this area, on the left-hand side. Just kind of a bit more zoomed in. And these are your possible actions. And Mr. Fisher from EMC Engineering is here for this application.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Leaf?
Yes, I do. What is the maximum height for structures in the county?
And that is a good question. That was something I will need to check back on the report, I mean, if Mr. Fisher can state. With fire department and county approval, it could be up to 60 feet depending on the zoning district, but this is a planned development, so there must be specific language that is allowing the specific height. So I will check on that if Mr. Fisher doesn't know offhand, but that's specific to the PD.
Any other questions of Ms. Leaf? Mr. Fisher, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself?
Good evening, I'm Dan Fisher with EMC Engineering, representing BPR Summit. I'm not sure of the exact height requirement, but I know this is comparable to the other two hotels. One is under construction, the Towne Place, by the same developer that's adjacent to this, right across the canal. This site is access to from an existing development. Property was sold by a group of doctors that owned the hospital facility next door, and there's already a 60-foot access easement with a private drive serving this site. So if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
You don't think it's going to be any higher than the existing Summit Building, though, correct? Or...
No, the residence in is four-story, this right across the canal here, as well as the Towne Place that's under construction. So they're all comparable in heights.
Well, I know the Summit Building, that did have to go through some FAA approvals, and I think it was one or two feet below the maximum height on it. So if it's lower than that building, hopefully it should not be an issue.
Right, and there's a supplemental being made to the FAA, so that approval will be...
Okay, that's going to be a limiting factor there.
Right, yes, sir.
And that Summit Building is five-story plus roof, so this is four-story, so it should be...
Yes, sir, it should be, I would imagine.
We can make our approval subject that it meets the height requirements of the PD text, since nobody knows what that is, right?
And subject to FAA approval.
Yeah.
But isn't everything subject to FAA approval? I mean, that's...
That's probably for a building.
In this area, yeah, that's going to be, the staff looks at that also. I know, I've seen several come through, and it's always been, they get a letter from the airport commission.
And that's part of the process to get the building permit, right? Yeah.
Right, and I do know they're going to phase it, they're going to build the Homewood first, and followed by the Element.
This, of course, is a public comment period, so is there anyone left who would like to come and speak in opposition of SP 5370? Please come forward, state your name, address the commission. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of SP 5370? Please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
And Madam Chair, if I can just state, I did check the height, so the planned development district refers to the freeway commercial zoning district for height, and it is up to 60 feet with the fire department's approval, and then, of course, the FAA approval, as y'all have already discussed.
Make a motion to approve SP 5370 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor? It is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is SP 5400, 3313 Glen Avenue Site Plan Approval. Ms. Leaf?
This is SP 5400, this is a landscape, landscape material company, they are proposing a small temporary building, 10 by 20, but that does trigger site plan. So they are doing a retail and wholesale landscape business, this is on Glen Avenue. This is the site right here, this highway commercial. And they're, the site's quite large, but their project area is very close just to the highway, the rest of this is wooded and not part of what they're expanding into currently with this proposal. So they do have parking areas, you come off the property, they are including a buffer along, a type E buffer along Highway 17, Glen Avenue. They do have the temporary building right over here, there are bins with the different landscape materials that people would, you know, pull up and pick up. And this is a proposal of the, of the building, just a few photos of the site, and they have been working on the site. The only element that really triggered the site plan was the building, so they could have the other elements, that's why they have been working on the site here. So just showing some of the materials on the site. And these are your possible motions, and Wesley Franks from Robert Civil, as well as Cliff Woodman from Woodman Builders are here for the applicant. Thank you.
I got a question for you, Ms. Leaf.
Yes.
Explain to me why a portable building like that would need to be through site plan approval? That is, in my opinion, that is overreach and just unnecessary red tape to have to go through.
And that's a, that's a very good point, we've talked about with our zoning code update, too, is if there's some threshold for something small, like a pole barn or small building, that could be administrative process, not necessarily site plan. But there is electrical, so it requires a building permit, and it's over, so on a commercial site, it's 200 square feet, and a commercial site, that also triggers a building permit. If this was residential, it wouldn't. So between the electrical and the size is the two aspects that trigger it.
And I have another question. Hypothetically, what would happen if this was not approved? Could they still operate even though they've set everything up, you know, got everything on the grounds as far as material?
Yeah, they would still be able to operate the business, they just, they wouldn't have a, really, an office location or the building on the site, but they could, you know, they could still have all of the ground materials and sales, so it'd be a little trickier, but they could still operate the majority of their business without the building.
And just out of curiosity, they don't have to have a restroom?
So that's a good question. So we did have a lot of discussion about that originally. Originally, they were proposing a port-a-lat to be on the site as really long-term use, more than just kind of a temporary construction use. They no longer include that on the site plans, they are showing water and sewer, but they do not have restroom facility. All of the comments came back compliant from all the, all the different reviewing agencies. However, environmental health does say that more than two employees on the site does trigger the need for a facility, and a portable potty does not equal a facility. So I know that the owner of the business mentioned there's an adjacent business that they could use, but I have talked with them about that potential concern, that that could still be an environmental health concern as they get up and operating and having employees on the site.
So they're going to have to have a bathroom?
They will need to have a bathroom.
Wow.
Yep.
Mr. Franks, you want to come forward?
Good evening again, Commissioners, Wesley Franks for Robert Civil Engineering, here to answer any questions on the site plan that's presented before you right now, but if you don't have any, requesting approval as presented, and like Ms. Leaf said, we have Cliff Woodman here, who's kind of the developer for the Saunders Landscape Supply Business here. If you have any questions for him, he'd be glad to answer those.
Commissioners?
Just to clarify, there's not going to be any trees removed presently?
No, yeah, what, pretty much what you see that's out there now, this is ready to be open minus going through the building permit process with the shed slash office building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
When we say temporary, how long, how long is temporary?
Maybe Mr. Woodman can get into that, if you'd like.
Good evening, Commissioners, Cliff Woodman, Woodman Builders, Chris Saunders, Saunders Landscape's a client of mine, and he, we currently, or we built a building for him on St. Simon's a couple of years ago, this is kind of an extension of his business. What he's doing on this location is what he's doing at his other location, but it did so well, he just needed to expand, so that kind of triggered all of this. He's funding this particular project out of his pocket, so therefore, to keep costs down, that's the reason for the temporary building, as this already seems evident that this is going to be a very viable project for him. So hopefully, long-term, you know, if this is, if they'll just get through, get him through a couple of years, then we'll present another plan with an actual building, and then he can invest into it to put a permanent building on the location. So hopefully, not more than two years, it's just kind of a ballpark, but we don't have a set, you know, we can't say, okay, in six months, it's going to be out of there, but that's just kind of a preliminary plan or idea.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I guess, for Ms. Leaf. Based on what we're hearing, it sounds like at some point that this will be operating non-compliant, and seem like it's being done out of order, you know, if, you said that what triggers the restroom is having more than two employees on the site?
That's my understanding, yeah, from environmental health.
It just seems like it's being done out of order, to me, I don't know.
Yeah, we talked a lot about that, and environmental health, at this point in the project, you know, they, I think their final comment was, I think, not applicable, so, because they are showing water and sewer on the site, so it kind of moves it into joint water and sewers realm, but joint water and sewer is not going to require a restroom, so it kind of fell into, I guess, kind of a limbo area. I mean, that's definitely a concern of ours, is that, you know, I mean, hopefully, they are able to build a building, the business does great, but what if it is longer term, and there isn't a facility on the site? So it's definitely a concern.
Are there other sites that are using portable?
I'd like to speak there.
Yeah, yeah.
Who does, who does that hurt? That's the kind of things I don't understand. If this guy, Mr. Saunders, wants a portable building that doesn't have a bathroom, and him and his employee or employees are willing to use a portable toilet, who does that hurt besides Mr.? besides Mr. Saunders and his employee?
I can't speak to that, except for just what the regulations state, where we can't allow a long-term use of, of portable, portable toilet, so.
Looking to make a comment. There is currently a portable toilet on-site that they've been using since they've been setting up, and since we've had to go through this entire process, and we do have water and sewer there, there's a high probability we'll go ahead and build a bathroom inside of this portable building. In addition to that, the boat dealership, Randy Asbell, who runs it, they have a mutual agreement, he has facilities on his, so they have a mutual agreement that his employees can also use his restroom, which is on an adjacent piece of property. So there, there are at least two facilities that are currently available right now for, for anyone that is on that property.
Okay, this, too, is a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to come and speak in opposition of this proposal? Not many people left in here. Is there anyone who would like to come and speak on behalf of this site plan approval? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of the site plan as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor? And we have one opposition, is that correct? So it is, it is passed. Okay, the last item on our agenda is SP 5402, 36, 3615 Highway 17, Site Plan Approval. Ms. Leaf?
Hey, thank you. So this is a proposed project on the South End of 17, closer to the Camden Line. It is guest lodging, the building size is 6,857 square feet. The, or the existing zoning is a mix of planned development and medium residential. So they are proposing a treehouse, two cabins, and a common building at this location, and it's, yeah, the split zoning is the Southport Commercial PD, as well as medium residential. All the, all of the proposed development is located within the PD section of the parcel, because under MR, we don't allow guest lodging, so hotels and motels are not allowed under MR. They do have access to Highway 17, so that would be the access to the site, and they would need an access permit from GDOT. So Southport Parkway is just a little bit to the north, up to the top right-hand side of the screen. This is a proposed property right here. And so here's some examples of, conceptually, what they're proposing for the site, these are the treehouses. The top image is one of the cabins they're looking at, and then the common, the common area amenity building is on the bottom part of the screen. And this is the proposed site plan. It's kind of hard to see from this distance, but here, here are some of the, the buildings on the site. These are your possible motions. And Reed Lovett with Robert Civil Engineering is here, representing the applicant. Thank you.
Let me make sure again, we have one treehouse, is that correct?
There is, let's see. Yeah, one treehouse, two cabins, and a common building. So I think the examples are just, yeah, two different examples of what the one treehouse could be, so it's not two treehouses.
I thought it was one, but when you said treehouses, I...
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions of Ms. Leaf?
So just for clarity, the, the lodging will be on the portion that's part of the PD text and not MR?
Yes.
So the MR part's going to be undeveloped?
That, that is correct, yeah. An original, kind of the early iteration did have some of it into the MR, but it has moved all into the PD portion of the property to meet that lodging requirement.
So this, this is going to be residential lodging?
Yeah, I mean, they, I know, and they can talk more about the kind of the plan, but I know, like, under MR, like, if you had a, you know, apartments or condos, I mean, there's the short-term rental programs that could be done under that, but they are proposing this as, as more of a shorter-term stay, so a hotel or motel, someone could come for a few days at a time, you know, not necessarily long, longer-term rentals, is my understanding.
Would you like to come forward, please?
Sure. Good afternoon, thank y'all for the opportunity. I'm Reed Lovett with Robert Civil Engineering. We have proposed this site plan. I will say, one of the images that you seen that had the, for the Commons Building, will only be one story, I made that note at the bottom, that you might not have could have seen. So it's a one-story common building, as you seen, with a porch all the way around. There is only one treehouse, and then the two wood cabins is kind of what he's wanting to do. It's going to be short-term, short-term stay, kind of VRBO, short-term, you know, and that's his plan, so far.
Is that going to, is, is that going to need a business permit?
I would assume at that point it was, he's going to be operating a, a rental.
He's going to operate it as a business?
Sure. Mm-hmm. He's going to own the rental property.
Okay.
Be much like a hotel.
That's right.
Okay.
And, and it's not a special event venue?
It's not. The actual Commons Building that you seen, the big building, that is for the on-site only, the ones who actually stay there, it'll have some pinball machines, something like that inside that area.
Gotcha.
Kind of a neat little layout, as it was presented to me. And it is inside the PD. Initially, he had shown the way we went through concept, he had showed a little over the line, and when we looked through zoning, we moved it up, everything, and he was great with that.
Gotcha.
I've just never seen anything like this.
Me and you both. But it's a first, and it's been pretty exciting to look at, but through the structural drawings that I've seen, I was pretty impressed. But without a tree, it'd be the first one I've ever, ever seen. I wish I could have used treehouse, we dug holes.
So you guys have no questions of Ms. Leaf either? Okay, again, this is a public comment period, and I realize there's nobody left in here, but I still have to ask, if there is anyone who would like to come and speak in opposition to SP 5402, please come to the podium and state your name and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in favor of this project? Please come to the podium, state your name. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to approve SP 5402 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioners? All in favor? It is approved. Thank you. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Anyway, we're going to get you...
Thank y'all.
We can stay in that treehouse as a gift.